Okay, thank you. The time is seven thirteen PM and we're returning from closed session. I'll ask Mr. Kennedy to please report out.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For closed session, item five point one point one, the claim of sunny pack EM twenty twenty-two dash zero six, a motion was made by Councilmember Donahue, which was seconded by Councilmember Welch to approve an additional one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents in settlement funds for the claimants' out-of-pocket car rental charges, which was not included in the original requested settlement amount for a total settlement of five thousand three hundred and forty dollars and fifty-nine cents. That motion was approved unanimously.
Would you like to report out the other items?
There were no other reportable items.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is seven fourteen PM. I'm adjourning this meeting of the closed session. And the time is seven fourteen PM. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the management of Emeryville Services Authority. Please note this meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act authorized by Assembly Bill three sixty-one. During the COVID state of emergency, the City Council and the boards and commissions of this city are authorized to conduct video conferences, provided that the state of emergency still exists. It's in the health, safety, welfare interests of the public, the staff, and the members of the council to conduct meetings via video conference. You make a finding not less than every thirty days to do so. It will be an item on the agenda to discuss continuing that during the state of emergency. Members of the public who wish to participate can do so by joining us via Zoom on the link provided for on today's agendas. In doing so, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom at the appropriate time, and I can call on you to speak at public comment. If you're joining us by telephone, you can press star nine, and I'll also recognize you. Finally, if you wish to submit an electronic comment through the speaker card system, you can do that by going into the City Council's website, where the agendas are located, and the clerk will read your comment at the appropriate time. This time, I'll ask if the clerk would take the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Welch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
And Mayor Bowers.
Here. Thank you for being here this evening. Next is approval of the final agenda. Members, is there any motions? I move approval of the final agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Bowers, seconded by Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Agenda has been approved. Ex parte communications. Are there any? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move now to public comment. This is for the Mesa Board. This is just our AB three sixty-one resolution. Any member of the public wish to comment on the Mesa Board's resolution for two minutes? Mr. Donahue, Brian Donahue, please be recognized for two minutes. Madam Clerk.
Okay, the reason why... Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
The reason why you were able to call on me by name is because getting on the Zoom call, I was... The city has set up these Zoom meetings whereby the citizens are forced to surrender their Fourth Amendment right. You cannot get on the Zoom meeting without giving your name and your email address. That's a violation of the Brown Act, as well as a violation of the Fourth Amendment. The Brown Act provides that we can access public meetings anonymously. Now, if these meetings were in person, like we could have, like we used to be able to do, you don't have to surrender your name and any identifying information. You can be anonymous. But now, we can't. So that's a violation, like I said, violation of the Brown Act and a violation of the Fourth Amendment.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this agenda? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll move to action items. We have one item. It's an AB three sixty-one resolution. And because it's an action item and not a consent item, I will call for public comment on this item. Would you receive any comment cards, April?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, and I'm going to honor the request of our Speaker, and I would like to recognize Anonymous One, please.
Can I ask the city attorney Kennedy to change the Zoom settings so that we can go to these meetings anonymously? I'm sure you're aware that it's Brown Act violation and that it's a Fourth Amendment violation. So I ask you to please fix this for future meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You've been renamed Anonymous One for this meeting. If you'd like to sign out of Zoom and sign back into Zoom, you can do that. And I believe you have the opportunity when you sign into Zoom to edit your name, as you wish, but I could be wrong. Okay? This time, is there a motion on item six point one?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
You're back.
Okay, who made the first?
I did.
Okay, thank you. A motion by Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve item six point one. Please call the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, that's approved. Madam Clerk, the time is seven twenty PM, and this meeting is adjourned. The time is seven twenty PM. I call to order the City of Emeryville as the successor agency, the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please note that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act, as was previously discussed at the last meeting. Please note that all members also remain present. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the agenda. Please call the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Okay, the agenda's been approved. Are there any ex parte communications to report? Okay, seeing none, now it's the time for public comment. A member of the public wishes to speak on the successor agency will have one minute to do so. Seeing no hands, public comment is now closed. We'll turn to the consent calendar. Are there any members who wish to pull or discuss consent calendar items? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Member Donahue, seconded by Member Welch to approve consent. Please call the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. So the consent calendar is approved. I see Mr. Davis's hand raised. You can lower your hand. We're not at the City Council meeting, sir. We're at the Redevelopment Agency. Thank you. So, action items, we have an AB three sixty-one finding for the Redevelopment Agency. Is there any discussion on this? Is there public comment on the AB three sixty-one resolution? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna give a motion to Martinez, second to Donahue to approve this resolution. Please call the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, the resolution is approved. The time is seven twenty-two. Madam Clerk, I'm adjourning the Redevelopment Agency meeting. And now, we're at the City Council meeting. The time is seven twenty-two. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Please note, as was previously noted, this meeting is pursuant to exemptions authorized by the Brown Act. Please also note that members of the public are able to participate via remote public comment using the Zoom raise hand feature, using star nine if you're joining us by telephone, or sending an electronic card to the clerk using the link provided for on the City Council's agendas page. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda for this meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second, Member Martinez, to approve this agenda. Please call the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, thank you. The agenda is approved. There are no special orders of the day. Item five is announcements of committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to let the council know that the application deadline has been extended to Wednesday, November thirtieth, for our open advisory body recruitments.
Thank you very much, members of the public. You're highly encouraged to submit your applications for committee and commission vacancies to any one of the city's relevant resident advisory boards. Item six is council member's special announcements or reports on meetings in attendance. Member Welch, do you have anything to report? No, Member Donahue? Member Martinez? Vice Mayor Medina?
Oh, I went to the mayor's conference. Thanks for that. It was a delightful time. It was in Hayward, and we learned about was Oakland's process to rematriate some land to the Agorate, the Sigorate Land Trust, which apparently took five years. So there's now a reverse easement process in place that other cities can reference. It was interesting.
Thank you for attending on my behalf. I have a lot of announcements I could make, but I'll just mention that I'm doing this meeting at five twenty-four AM in Egyptian time. I'm in Sharm El Sheikh in Egypt for the COP twenty-six, seven Climate Conference for the United Nations, representing California and the US on a subdelegation. And I'll have more to report out when this is completed, but I've learned a lot about indigenous issues during my time here. The focus of my work is indigenous equity while I'm here. So just want to thank the mayors of Alameda County and my council colleagues for supporting my participation on the Air District Board. As the chair, I get to participate in this UN conference. Okay, so next is the city manager's report. Mr. Polinzer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I just very quickly wanted to highlight a couple events that happened this weekend that were noteworthy and noteworthy for the public. Thankfully, both ended uneventful, but we on Saturday had a bomb threat on the two thousand block of Powell Street. Alameda County Sheriff investigated and was able to quickly conclude that it was not a bomb. It's in fact just a poorly wrapped package, but there was a call to that business and a sister business of it down in Southern California. Both threats were not, had no findings to them. So thankfully, although we had to evacuate the building and create a safety zone around the building, take the actions, that it was in fact a credible threat, I'm happy to report that there was no bomb. The second event happened on Sunday. Again, no one was injured, but we had a four-car disrelement on the train tracks there between the Powell underpass and Sixty-Fifth, I think it's Sixty-Fifth Avenue. And again, Union Pacific had mediated the problem without any assistance from its regional partners, including the city of Emeryville or our fire department. On the brighter side, the mayor, working with our community services department, are busy planning for the December second tree lighting event and parade. Parade will start on Park Avenue and move its way down to Bay Street. The event will be for no cars. It will be bike roll and stroll and caroling along the way. There'll be a lot more information as we get closer to the event, but with the holidays interrupting our regular activity here at City Hall, just thought we'd get that plug out early and let people know that it could be a very exciting event, a lot of fun as we go into the holiday season. And then just a reminder to all of us during the holiday season, be as generous as you can be, be kind to one another, and remember, this is a time to celebrate community and come together. So I wish everyone a great up and coming Thanksgiving and look forward to returning back December sixth. December sixth, we will be, unless there's any change in the ballots that are being certified by the county, we will be swearing in our new council members, and we will be celebrating the years of service of our Councilmember Donahue and Councilmember Martinez. So I hope everyone is able to join us on December sixth. The county does have thirty days from Election Day to certify the election, but based on the current trends, we think the certification of the council members and Measure O will be certified by December sixth. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Happy to answer any questions you may have of me.
Thank you, Mr. Polinzer. Are there any questions for him regarding his report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to ex parte communications. Are there any members who wish to report in ex parte communication? Member Welch.
Yes, just on item eleven point one, I spoke with Gabriela Jimenez of Burke Davis Public Affairs.
Okay, we have that in the record. Is there anyone else who wishes to report in public, I'm sorry, in ex parte communication? Member Martinez?
I did not have an opportunity to return that phone call, but I received a phone call from Sean Sullivan, board member for Ewaldsy, who is an applicant in item eleven point one. And I also received an email from a resident at Avalon, which is, which was developed by Ewaldsy.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Member Donahue?
I received that same email that Diane just mentioned.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I received two separate resident emails regarding eleven point one.
Yeah, I received the same emails regarding eleven point one from the public. That will conclude ex parte communications. Item nine is public comment for items that are not on the agenda or the consent agenda. Members of the public who wish to speak for an item that is not on tonight's agenda or is a subject matter for item ten, any of the subjects of item ten will now get three minutes to speak to those items. And I would like to ask the city clerk for the three minutes to first authorize and take comment from Craig Davis, please.
He... He went away.
You lowered his hand for some reason. To keep it up until the clerk recognizes you, please.
Got it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Sorry about that. Prior... Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
All right. Prior to the previous council meeting, I responded to the city attorney's claim that a change of state law would be required to implement cyclistvideoevidence.com's pilot program in the city of Emeryville. I hope to respectfully discuss his concerns, but he would not respond to my email or phone messages. So we were left to surmise what state law he was referring to. We surmise he's referring to Vehicle Code forty-three-hundred, which states the provisions of this chapter shall govern the peace officers in making arrests for violations of the code without a warrant for offenses committed in their presence, but the procedure prescribed herein shall not be otherwise, shall not otherwise be exclusive of any other method prescribed by law for the arrest and prosecution of a person for offenses of like grade. If this is the statute and his interpretation, it's critical to note that he is suggesting law enforcement cannot use cyclist video evidence because an officer has to personally witness every threatening incident a cyclist experiences on the road. Officers personally witnessing even a tiny fraction of the incidents cyclist experience is an impossibility. He is therefore suggesting law enforcement can never enforce violations against cyclists on the road, and cyclists will never be safe cycling. We explain that other methods prescribed by law for the arrest and prosecution of a person for an offensive like grade include those used by, in several of our members' precedent setting cases that we documented in detail. Specifically, an officer simply can get a warrant from a judge using cyclist video evidence as probable cause. Officers do this every day across California based on video evidence. And secondly, a cyclist can demand the cases sent to the DA for review. I shared the city attorney's statement with the Los Angeles District Attorney, who successfully prosecuted our Glendale assault precedent case, and she said, "It's astonishing to me that any prosecutor in 2022 is questioning the ability to use video evidence in criminal prosecution." Virtually every case we have includes some sort of video evidence, from ring cameras to flock cameras to body worn cameras. We provided documented precedents of officers sightings drivers for cyclists, using cyclist video evidence for infractions and misdemeanor reckless driving and misdemeanor assault. Law enforcement can use cyclist video evidence to enforce existing laws. They just more often than not refuse to do so, which leads over seventy percent of cyclists injured in collisions that land them in the emergency room to not report their collisions to law enforcement. This means the only data Emeryville relies on for road safety improvement funding, collisions, is horribly underreported and unreliable. Yet, it's critically important to note the top reasons cyclists stop cycling and potential cyclists don't start are not collisions. The top reason is near misses, which are orders of magnitude more frequent than collisions, and therefore represent a much higher resolution data set. Completely separate from the surmised misinterpretation of the law, the city attorney has a misunderstanding of the outcomes and value propositions of the CDE's pilot program, including giving cyclist agency in their own safe act of transportation.
All right. Mr. Davis, we've hit our three minutes for public comment. Thank you for your public comment. Okay. I'll now recognize Anonymous One. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to say the previous speaker is speaking to the wrong city. Emeryville does not care about bike safety. We know that because our chief of police recently ruled that vehicles are allowed to block bike lanes in violation of California Vehicle Code. He had a different reading of the California Vehicle Code, such that he ruled that vehicles are allowed to block bike lanes and park in bike lanes for up to seventy-two hours. We're the only city in California that that's been ruled. So this previous speaker, I hope he's listening. You know, you should be aware that this is, you know, this is the love Emeryville shows towards bicycling, bike safety. Then I want to change the subject and talk about, I know that this is Councilmember Donahue and Councilmember Martinez's last full meeting. And so I went back and looked at the, when they were asking for us to reelect them back in 2018. I did a questionnaire in my news site, on my news site, the Emeryville title, I did a questionnaire of the two councils. And one of the questions was, I noted that the citizens of Emeryville had paid for a public library to be located at the ECCL, the school campus, but we'd never received one. And then I asked Councilmember Martinez, if you're reelected, will you make getting a public library at ECCL a priority? And I asked Councilmember Donahue, he said, yeah, maybe try to, whatever, you know, him didn't, you know, not clear of the answer, but Councilmember Martinez's answer was extremely clear. It was a one-word response. She just said, yes. So clearly, it wasn't either, you know, you weren't telling us the truth, you know, or you couldn't get it done. You said it was a prior, will be a priority. So if we had four years, didn't get, didn't happen. So I'm taking you at your word. It was a priority, that just, you just couldn't get it done. So here's what I would like Councilmember Martinez to do, is now that we have two new council members coming in, I think that you should speak with them and tell them to make getting a public library at the ECCL a priority, since you didn't do it. So we voted for you because that's what, that you wanted, and we want that, so we voted for you. And so in the spirit of that, if you could let them...
With your time, thank you very much, Mr. Anonymous. Thank you. Okay, and the last public speaker, just to be clear, this is not, item is not on the agenda, so we will have other items, but we'll recognize Showers of Flowers, Emeryville, California. Good evening. You have three minutes. Please unmute. If Showers of Flowers would like to speak at public comment, please accept the clerk's unmute. There you go. Go ahead.
Hi, hi, Mayor Flowers and distinguished council members. My name's Tony Martinez, and I've operated Showers of Flowers for forty years now. Ewaldsy has mentioned to me that they want to be have a part in some development of housing in Emeryville. And there's all the years that I've worked with them, they have been the best I've ever seen. They're very community-minded. They get everybody involved and keep a safe and really well-operated services for any community that will have them. When they mentioned to me that they wanted to bring this to Emeryville, I was really happy because of all the experience I've had with them in the past. They did development in West Oakland and East Oakland and all parts of they've really had success stories. We now operate our business in the Avalon Building, and I've never had any type of commercial space that has done the most effort in order to keep us in business and also do a well-deserved service to our community. I can't speak any more highly of them. If you want to see the records of they do, just look at, look at their tenants and all their, their commercial and residential people that have done really well. They keep everybody involved, and they sustain with great, great success stories. And that's what my opinion, opinion is about them. And just take a look at, take a look at what I've done with their help, and it's outstanding. That's all I have to say. So I can't give them any more than a raving approval of whatever they want to do. And I thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Tony, for being here. You have a lovely evening. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on items not on tonight's agenda or the consent calendar? Did you receive any written comment cards?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, and I see other hands raised. I just want to be clear that if you're calling about the Christie sites, that is an agenda item. We will have public comment for that later. So if you're calling to tell me about the Christie sites, Ewaldsy, or EH Housing, you can lower your hand, because that will be actually a later item. Okay, so I see other hands raised, so I'm hoping we're not going to go through this multiple times this evening. Again, this is for items not on the agenda. Bruce Doogie, three minutes.
Hello, Bruce Doogie here. I just want to express some support for the CDE, the cyclist video evidence. You know, I've been working with Craig for a number of years in Castro Valley, and, you know, I ride with a camera, and I've had, you know, a lot of difficulty with drivers. And we have now in Castro Valley CHP, they're the ones that handle our traffic problems. And, you know, they have a three-foot warning letter that they will send out as long as I call in. And I probably called in, I know I've called in more than a hundred of these different letters. I just called one in today, in fact. So I just want to say I support the whole cyclist, you know, video evidence. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please, will be Board Member Zoom. Good evening. You have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Beth Rosales, a South Emeryville resident of the Avalon Senior Housing, owned by Ewaldsy. So is this the right time for me to speak, or you want me to speak later?
As I mentioned just a moment ago, if you're here to speak about Ewaldsy and the EH and the Christie sites, that will be at item eleven point one.
All right, I'll speak later. Thank you very much. So sorry. Let me hold on me. So sorry.
That's all right. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll lower that hand and recognize James Brook, please. Good evening.
Yeah, I thought I had lowered my hand, because I'm here to speak for that. Now, I recognize eleven, eleven point one, I believe you say?
Yes, I will call for public comment when we reach that item, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, last call. Anybody who wishes to comment on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent calendar. Members, you have in front of you items ten point one through ten point nine inclusive. Is there any item that members wish to discuss or poll? Member Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like the opportunity to discuss item ten point five before we vote on consent.
You may, absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay, this is for the Common on Aging, and we are accepting the Age Friendly Communities Action Plan for consideration tonight as a source document. This is a culmination of five years of work that included a lot of community engagement, hands-on research, site visits, walks, tours, and then finally, many, many discussions and meetings about the results and the findings. And while this work was done by our Commission on Aging, please note that age-friendly communities support the community members of all ages and all abilities. So this work was really done on behalf of the entirety of the Emeryville community. And so I don't have much longer here on this council, but I urge the council and future council members, along with staff and the greater community, to lean on these findings and recommendations in our CIP, in our budget process, and all of our planning processes. And I would sincerely like to thank the Commission on Aging for all of the heartfelt work that they put into this over many, many years. It was an iterative process. We... It was an iterative process, and we saw staff members, volunteers, consultants come and go, but the, our Commission on Aging has been stalwart in this work and will hopefully leave a lasting impression that will leave us with a better community for everyone. So my thank you to the Commission on Aging, and I hope that the council approves the consent calendar as it is.
Well, in that case, you might like to make a motion.
I will move the consent calendar, please.
Okay, we have a motion. All right, a motion has been made by Member Martinez and seconded by Member Welch to approve items 10.1 through 10.9 inclusive. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders.
Aye, thank you, members. That item is approved, those items are approved. Well, now to the action items. Item 11.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving EAH Housing as the first-choice developer and related California/East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation as the second-choice developer for the redevelopment of 5890, 5900, and 6150 Christie Avenue. Excuse me, authorizing the city manager to execute an exclusive right to negotiate agreement with the selected developer and accepting and appropriating $100,000 from the non-refundable deposit for fiscal year 2223's budget for professional services for capital improvement project H02, which is the Christie housing sites. So this, for members of the public, we are not at public comment, but this will be an opportunity for comment after we've received the staff presentation, and I will turn it over to Chad Smalley and Valerie Bernard for that.
Good evening. I do have a presentation. Thank you, April, for pulling that up. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Bauders and councilmembers. I'm here today to present to you the RFP process that was undertaken and the developer selection recommendations for the Christie Avenue sites. If we can go to next slide, please. Just as a recap, the Christie Avenue sites contains three parcels located at 5890, 5900, and 6150 Christie Avenue. Those three parcels total 2.01 acres. It's bounded by Christie Park to the north, that you can see there on the image, as well as Marketplace to the, to the east. To the west, we have Christie Avenue, and then to the south is a parking structure that serves an office building located at 5850 Shell Mount. The site was acquired using low-mod income housing assets, and because of that, it does become a redevelopment site, which requires development activities to be initiated by September 2022, which is how we got to the point of having, of moving forward with this RFP process. I also wanted to identify that back in June, the City Council did take action that was required by state law to designate the property as exempt surplus. Those findings were made because the site being 2.01 acres is over the one-acre requirement. The intent of City Council was that the site be redeveloped as a mixed-income or mixed-use site with at least 25% of the affordable housing units being designated for low-income households and the residential units consisting of at least 300 units. Next slide. So in January of 2022 is when we first brought this project to you guys, and more recently, it was brought back, I believe, in 2014. And at that time, we did seek direction from the City Council in regards to the development goals for the sites. Based on the direction we received at that time, it was identified that we needed to ensure that we were maximizing the number of housing units, we were maximizing the number of affordable housing units for a range of incomes at the site. There wanted to be a focus on incorporating three- and four-bedroom family-friendly units and amenities on the site. We wanted to ensure we were prioritizing energy efficiency and carbon-neutral development. There was a request to expand Christie Park with an active use to ensure that the development created connections to the marketplace, as well as the pedestrian right and bike routes that were surrounding the area, as well as to incorporate some type of sustainable commercial or retail transportation use. So we utilized these seven development goals and integrated them into our Request for Proposals, or RFP, as I'll refer it to further in the, in the presentation. Next slide, please. So as I said, with this information, the RFP was drafted, and the following is a timeline identifying how we went through the process. The RFP was released back in June. We did do a pre-proposal meeting in July, which we had 75 attendees, very excited that we had so many people interested in the redevelopment of the site. Proposals were due on August 5th. We received six proposals. Out of those six proposals, we did an initial evaluation, reduced those down to a short list of four developers. We then took recommendations before the Housing Committee in October to provide recommendation related to developer selection, and then we are here today also seeking that developer selection. Next slide, please. The evaluation panel opted not to move forward with the following two proposals onto the shortlist. Those two proposals, the first one was submitted by the top picture, which is California Landmark, Praxis and SAHA. They were the combined development team. They had proposed to split the site into two distinct seven-story mid-rise buildings that would have 340 units, 89 of which would be affordable. So there was one building, the building that was on the northern side of the site, would be the market rate project, it had 250 market rate units, that would be one- and two-bedroom units. The second building, which would be on the south side of the site, would be the 90 all-affordable, 100% affordable building. And then that develop, that building would encompass one, two, and three, and four-bedroom units. They were proposing to have about 10,000 square feet of retail flexible space on the ground floor, as well as on the second floor. There would also be a park, I'm sorry, 10, and there would also be a park expansion that would encompass a basketball court, as well as two pickleball courts. The second proposal, that's the picture at the bottom of the screen, came from the Pacific Company. The Pacific Company was proposing to also develop 340 units. It was going to be 100% affordable housing development. The reason you see that slight difference between the 336 and the 340 is because there would have been four units set aside for property management staff. Their development was going to also encompass two buildings that would be bridged over 59th Street. There was a sky basketball court located on the second floor that would provide access to Christie Park. The units encompass studios, one, two, and three-bedroom units, and then there was about 1,000 square feet of flexible commercial space that was adjacent to Christie Park. Next slide, please. Those are the two proposals we opted not to move forward with. We did, however, shortlist the following four proposals, and those four proposals came from EAH, High Ridge Costa, Jonathan Rose Companies that partnered with Resources for Community Development, or RCD, as well as proposal from related companies and the East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation, also known as Ebalce. Next slide, please. So the first proposal I'm going to highlight here is from High Ridge Costa. High Ridge Costa had a two-phase development that consisted of three buildings. What's illustrated here is the 10,000-square-foot park expansion that would include two pickleball courts, an outdoor fitness area, as well as benches. Adjacent to the park is the affordable housing structure that consisted of 87 units. The park is open to the internal courtyard of that residential building, and they also incorporated townhome-style units aligning the park. Next slide. The second image here, you're going to see the building on the left is going to be the second structure, and that is a five-level future-proof parking structure with active brown floor, flexible commercial space and community space, as well as townhomes that line Market Street and line the Paseo and 59th Street. The building to the right was going to be a 20-story, 20-story middle-income tower that would be located to the south of 59th Street. There was going to be a pedestrian bridge that's proposed, that's connecting the tower to the parking structure. That parking structure would provide parking for both the residents in the middle-income tower, as well as the affordable tower. The developer did propose about 17,000 square feet of commercial space between the tower and the parking structure. However, in conversation and during our interview with them, they did opt, they did identify that they would be interested in reducing the amount of commercial space and adding in additional units to the parking structure or the tower. The tower was proposed to be financed through a joint powers authority agreement that would issue middle-income housing bonds to finance the development of the tower. Next slide, please. The next proposal came from the Jonathan Rose Company, which again partnered with Resources for Community Development, RCD. This proposal also includes a two-phase development with 340 units proposed. There was going to be a market rate high-rise tower that's adjacent to the 22,000-square-foot park expansion, which included a full-size basketball court, a gathering and play area, a landscape room, as well as a pork-on-park. The extension of Market Plaza, there would be an extension to that to improve some of the paving and the pedestrian improvements as well. Next slide. Adjacent to the high-rise, which you can again see here in this image, is the mid-rise 100% affordable project. The developer did provide us with a couple of options for the sighting of this development. What's pictured here is that the developer would actually build a podium and put the high-rise and the 100% affordable housing project on that podium. They're also proposing the relocation of 59th Street to the south of the site, so that the entire site was built on an adjacent parcel, and then 59th Street would align with a future pedestrian bike path. Townhome units were also proposed to be located along grade at Market Street to improve the pedestrian walkability. As I mentioned, they did provide us with another option that did break the site apart. They still proposed the relocation of 59th Street, but they provided us with another option that would actually build a walkway or a paseo that cut through the tower, as well as the affordable building. Next slide, please. So the last two proposals that were just provided are our two mixed-income high-rise proposals. Just as a point of reference and provide a little bit of detail on there, just so you can compare the two projects. Some of the concerns that we did have with both high-rise projects as proposed was that they did raise some financial feasibility questions. With High Ridge Costa, they were proposing a financial structure that was something that was very risky for the city and not as advantageous for the city to participate in. And then with the Jonathan Rose RCD proposal, their market rate tower would require extremely high rents. And so we felt that the high financial risk related to that made both of these proposals something that we were concerned with. We also wanted to go back to what the development goals were that were provided by City Council, which did identify that we were to maximize the number of affordable units. Because both developers proposed mixed income, they are not providing as many affordable units as the other two proposals that were shortlisted. Next slide, please. And so that brings us to the remaining two shortlisted proposals, which are both 100% affordable mid-rise developments. I'm going to walk through each of those proposals in a minute, but I did just kind of want to do a quick highlight, because we are looking at two proposals that are bringing in 100% affordable housing. We did do an analysis to look at how this would impact the area surrounding Marketplace with the integration of 300 and, 300-plus units. We looked at all of the rental projects that surrounded Marketplace that are existing, as well as those that are proposed. And when we looked at those, we found that 84% of those units are market rate, leaving 16% of them affordable. If we integrated either one of these proposals into that part of the community, that would make it to where 41% of the units in this area would be affordable, and the other 59 would remain market rate. So we still have a high number of market rate units that would be in this area and would really provide us with a mixed-income community, even though these structures would be 100% affordable. Next slide, please. So that brings us to our final two proposals. EAH is the proposal of one, and the Related Ebalce is the second development team, and I'll go into each one of their proposals. Next slide, please. So EAH is proposing 367 units for households between 30 and 60% AMI between three buildings and over three phases. What's showing here is a 6,000-square-foot park expansion that would accommodate a basketball court. The first building would incorporate townhouse units that would align the park as well, that would align the park as well. And they're also incorporating a bike retail shop and micro-mobility hub that's located along the ground floor to do ground floor activation. Next slide. What's illustrated here is what they're calling a shared street that's demarked by a bright painted surface. This is our 59th Street that would cut between Buildings Two and Building Three. It would prioritize pedestrian access, but also provide access for cars to access the parking garages located along 59th Street within Buildings Two and Three. Next slide, please. This is the overview site plan of what they're proposing as it sits within the Christie Avenue sites. It'll be, to the left is the park and the basketball court adjacent to that. They also are proposing to have a paseo that's located directly across from the Public Market entrance that would connect pedestrians from Market Drive all the way over to Christie as well. Some of the programming that they have proposed for this development does include an onsite after-school program for the residents. There would be laundry spaces, a play zone, rooftop decks, micro-mobility hub, family get-around store rooms. And regarding the micro-mobility hub, they're really utilizing this as an option for our residents who may not have a car, but have items that need to be stored and don't have the space to store them in their unit. So in that micro-mobility hub, residents would be able to store not only their bicycles, electric and non-electric, but also that they'd be able to have, there's locker spaces so they could store their bike helmets, car seats, things that would help them get around town if they don't have an automobile. Next slide. Our last proposal comes in from Related and Ebalce. They're partnering on this development, and they are proposing 300, their original proposal was 302 units. Through our interview process, they actually provided us with an alternative to their original proposal that increases the number of units to 354. They're proposing to serve households between 30 and 60% AMI, but it's really between 30 and 80% with a 60% income averaging utilized for the site across all three buildings. They have a 9,300, 300-square-foot park expansion that would accommodate a basketball court, a bocce court, a game area, as well as a social plaza. Next, next slide, please. And the next slide, you're seeing their paseo that cuts between Buildings One and Two, that would provide pedestrian access and activation from Marketplace Drive all the way over to Christie. They're also proposing to have patios or courtyard that would overlook that path, that paseo to provide additional eyes on the ground. Next slide. This is the overview of how their building fits in with the landscape of the community. Again, you'll see the park located to the left of the picture, and then the 59th Street with additional pedestrian improvements, as well as through the mews cutting through the property. Next slide. So in summary, both proposals provided by EAH and Related are very, very similar. Both developers are extremely experienced, have great reputations, and really have provided us with stellar projects here in Emeryville. There's very few differences between the proposals, and I'll just highlight a few of them. So EAH is providing us with more units, about 13 units more than Related and Ebalce did. Related Ebalce is proposing to do an income averaging, so while they will allow households' incomes to rise up to 80%, there would be an average income of 60%. EAH is providing us with more units to serve our very low-income households that are at 50% of AMI. 50% of AMI. Related Ebalsey is incorporating a couple of four-bedroom units into their proposal. The park expansion is larger for Related Ebalsey than it is proposed for EAH. Related Ebalsey also has a smaller parking ratio of about .5 spaces per unit, whereas EAH is proposing .75. Both participants are proposing a bike shop, but Related and Ebalsey are also incorporating a potential fitness or climbing gym for their retail space. And then lastly, I did just wanna point out that we did look at the funding. Their funding proposals are very similar. They're both proposing three phases. They both are seeking a lot of similar investments from local and state funding resources. EAH did have a slightly smaller funding gap per unit at about $296,000 than Related at the $394,000. Next slide, please. So to take all those details off and just get down to the nitty-gritty, there are four things that EAH is providing us that are slightly better than Related and Ebalsey, and there are four things that Related and Ebalsey is providing us. So there is a very difficult decision that was brought before staff, the evaluation panel, the housing committee, and is now being brought forth to City Council today. Next slide, please. I also just wanted to show how each proposal would impact the sixth cycle of the arena. In the sixth cycle, we're supposed to produce 1,815 units. With the proposal that was provided to us by EAH, they're providing us with 108 extremely-low-income units, 160 very-low-income units, 96 low, and then three that are above moderate. So this development is definitely impacting the number of units that we need to accommodate our arena. With the Related Ebalsey proposal, they're providing us with 79 extremely-low units, 145 very-low units, 127 low, and then again the three above moderate. As I mentioned before, both proposals are going to drastically impact the city's ability to meet our production for the next housing element cycle. Next slide. So with that, the staff, as well as the housing committee, have determined that because both developers provided us with very stellar proposals, we opted to look back at the development goals. And because we wanted to maximize the number of units, and there was a slightly lower funding gap that was provided, we have determined that we are recommending EAH as the first-choice developer and Related Ebalsey as the second-choice developer. And so we are seeking that authorization today, as well as the authorization for the city manager to execute the draft exclusive rights to negotiate agreement with the first-choice developer. We do have both the teams of EAH and Related Ebalsey here, and they have short presentations, but I'm available to answer any clarifying questions at this time, or I can wait until their proposals, whatever the council would like.
Thank you so much, Valerie, for an extremely comprehensive presentation of the process that got us to today and the proposals we received and reviewed thus far. I'd like to ask council if they have questions for Valerie on the backdrop of this process or what is contained at a high level here in these proposals, before we hear from the applicants themselves. Yeah, I see no hands raised, so we'll move to the presentations. My ask of both applicants is please be prudent with the amount of time you wish to spend presenting. I will, if I feel what's going on or being repetitive from what's been presented, I will end your presentation early if necessary. So, thank you.
Valerie, do you want to introduce the first presenters of?
Yeah. The first team we're asking to present tonight is coming from EAH, and Bianca Newman will be leading that presentation. I'll allow her to introduce the rest of her team that's gonna participate. And then when they're finished, I will give the same introduction for the other team. Thank you.
I apologize, I don't see Bianca. Is she?
I'm gonna guess Resource Coordinators Shared is somebody. Their names on the screen here are not helping us figure out who's who. But why don't we promote Resource Coordinator Shared for a moment to speak, just to see if it's who we need.
Do you have Welton?
Yes, that's me, Bianca Newman.
Okay, so there we go. We have the person we need.
So our architecture team and Welton Jordan, our chief real estate officer, are also here with me this evening, but I'll be the only one speaking, and I'll try and keep it very brief. Thank you, Valerie, for your presentation, and thank you, council, for having us here this evening and for your continued support of affordable housing. We'd like to underscore our commitment to partnering with the city of Emeryville to develop a master plan that serves the families of Emeryville. EAH is a non-for-profit affordable housing developer and operator here with you for the long term. Our commitment is to building a lasting development that serves residents, neighbors, and strengthens the fabric of the existing neighborhood. Our proposal directly addresses all seven stated goals by the city of Emeryville. Next slide. One, to maximize the number of homes exceeding the 340 zoning maximum, utilizing AV-1763 to provide an additional 27 apartments for a total of 367 apartments in three eight-story buildings, maximizing affordability and 100% affordable housing development that serves residents at or below 60% of AMI at an average of 45% of AMI. We also are including 30% of apartments at 30% of AMI to allow ample opportunity for the inclusion of special needs populations, a decision that we really wanna make in partnership with the city. To develop family-friendly housing and services with a mix of apartments that includes 63% of units that are two and three bedrooms, and accommodations for in-home childcare units, which also aim to reduce the need for cars and the number of car trips. We also will have after-school and summer programs to support school-aged children in partnership with Emery Unified School District, as we do at Estrella Vista. Next slide. We'll be focused on green building, energy efficiency, and transportation mode shift. Our plan is really to maximize energy efficiency in the building and 100% electric building that maximizes onsite renewable energy generation in a way that's beneficial to our residents, connects them to the local ecology, and with design that also focuses on resiliency and provides refuge from heat and air pollution. Next slide. We plan to support mode shift via mobility hubs, car share, and minimize, and also by minimizing the parking square footage in a garage that is, in three garages that are designed to be future-proof and easily converted to alternate uses. Next slide. The size of the garage is zone-compliant with a surface parking lot that's at a ratio of .33 parking spaces, but can accommodate stackers to provide parking at a level that is equal to what's allowable for an equivalent market rate development. This is achieved with a taller ground floor, which also allows us to accommodate townhomes and retail space. Next slide. Expanding Christie Park and adding value to the neighborhood. In considering priorities, we started with the minimum park expansion to maximize the number of homes, but are extremely open to increasing the size of the park. Here are a few options that range between 9,000 and 12,000 square feet, and we look forward to really discussing these concepts as we move forward in the development process. Next slide. Improving pedestrian and bike access. The site plan creates a new pedestrian connection between Christie Avenue and the public market, upgrades major bike lanes, and really transforms the 59th Street easement into a vibrant shared street. We were also very thoughtful and made sure that there was no need for vehicular circulation on Market Drive, because we understand that there are some future desires to have more pedestrian use on Market Drive. And then next, lastly, developing a sustainable commercial use. We partnered with Bay Area Bike Rescue, a non-for-profit organization that refurbishes bikes and gives them to people in need of transportation. We plan to have them located on the ground floor of Building One, what we call the park building. They will provide free and low-cost bikes, safety training, maintenance, and volunteer opportunities for our residents and the broader community. Next slide. EAH has a great working relationship with the city of Emeryville, and we look forward to continuing that partnership. Together, we've completed Estrella Vista mid-pandemic and recently submitted entitlements on 4300 San Pablo, the first-of-its-kind intergenerational housing development made possible through our joint advocacy efforts. Our team is committed to Emeryville and to meeting the ambitious goals set for the Christie Avenue site. We look forward to exploring and refining this proposal with the city staff, city council, planning commission, and the people of Emeryville. Thank you. I hope that was brief enough, and our team is happy to answer any questions you might have.
Bianca, that was a very classic modeling case of how exactly to give a presentation after a presentation, so thank you so much. Are there any council members who have questions about the presentation we received? We can obviously ask questions again later during discussion. Just raise your hand, 'cause we have a shared screen up right now. Seeing none, let's go to the other presentation, please.
The second presentation is coming from the development partnership team of the Related Company and the East Bay Asian Local Development Corporation. Anne Silverman, I believe, is going to lead the presentation, and then she can also introduce the rest of her team that's on the call with her.
Good evening. This is Anne Silverberg. Can you all hear me?
We can, Anne, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So I'm Anne Silverberg. I'm CEO for Northern California at Related. I'm joined this evening with Tu Nguyen from Related, Capri Roth, and Liz Probst from Ebalsey, and Chris Higland from VAR Architects, and we're all available to answer questions. First, I wanna start by saying thank you to all of you, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, and staff for including us in this discussion tonight. We're really happy to participate, and we look forward to answering any questions that you have. Next slide. We'll also try to be brief and squeeze as much as we possibly can into our five minutes. We wanna talk a little bit about our proposal, as well as our team. I do wanna note that we presented a number of options in terms of total unit count from 300 over 450 units on this site. We're happy to discuss any of those options, but in all of them, we really attempted to be as inclusive as possible with our community, providing a range of affordability, a range of unit types, including a lot of three-bedrooms as well as four-bedroom units. It's really hard to find family-sized units these days. We also have accessible units and also units available for those with special needs, and we have supportive services to support those residents. Next slide. Our team is really focused on sustainability. It's part of our DNA. We embrace smart growth strategies and principles. We try to bring those to our proposal. We thought a lot about connectivity, walkability, how to increase bike ridership, and really reduce dependence on cars. Our proposal notably has a parking ratio of .5, and we've done this in other locations and believe it's totally appropriate here. And like many of us, our goal is to house people and not house cars. Next, next slide. We, as a team, really focus on where people live. You can go to the next slide, thank you. Where people live, as well as how they live. We're very detail-oriented, and we think through all aspects of the development. So in the design process, we think about how the units work, where to store the cereal boxes. We think about how the amenities are laid out, and we also think about how our buildings work with and complement the existing neighborhood. That's particularly important for this development. We thought a lot about how to activate the ground floor spaces to create a really thriving neighborhood here. One thing that we also really focused on was the expansion of Christie Park. We have a pretty significant expansion here, almost 10,000 square feet, very programmed. And the idea here is to create a more, or to create a healthy, vibrant, usable green space that works in concert with the active ground floor space adjacent to it to promote community connection and more engaging experience for everyone. This is a real opportunity for place-making. Next slide. So just a comment on feasibility. Our plans are well-vetted. We have pricing from a general contractor. We have a number of projects in construction right now that are like this, so we try to be as realistic as possible with all of our cost estimates and in estimating the gap. The gap is based on assumptions, but really what's important is thinking about those cost-saving opportunities and really making smart choices. And I think, you know, one thing that is an example of that is a lower parking ratio. That's a cost-saving measure that ultimately is going to lead to a lower and closed gap in shovels in the ground, so to speak. Next slide. So I recognize that our team is not as well-known in Emeryville, and, you know, I hope that as you start to get to know us, you realize that we are very well-suited for this development. If you could go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about our development team. I'll start with Related. Related brings unparalleled financial strength and capacity. We have strong relationships with state-level funding sources and with lenders and investors with a national presence. We're also really skilled and effective at delivering on a large-scale master plan, phased developments of this size and this density. This is what we do. This is what we do all the time. This is solidly in our wheelhouse. We also have a really strong get-it-done approach and philosophy. As an example, we just broke ground on the first phase of four in a development that was just awarded two years ago. We like to move forward quickly, and we have a track record of doing that very successfully. Next slide. Also, very important to the success of this development is what Ebalsey brings. They're truly unmatched as a local development organization, their connection and their support of community. They're local, they're actually hyper-local, they're right here in the community right now, and their engagement begins at the outset, and they stay with the development all the way through operations. They work to uplift the residents and communities with really intentional, inclusive, creative community development approaches, and I can't emphasize enough the importance of that in a development like this. Next slide, please. So this is our team. We have a history of successfully working on projects just like this. Our architects' buildings are well-designed, they're beautiful, they're well-thought-out, and we have the capacity to execute. I know it wasn't part of the decision-making criteria, but it's just part of who we are and our core values. We have a very diverse and inclusive team, both in terms of the organizations that we've brought together and the individual team members as well. This is the team that would work on this project. This is us. And if you go to the last slide, please. I want to just end by saying we recognize that you have a really, really important decision to make with regard to who you partner with at Christie Avenue, and we really appreciate being considered. I know that we're second-place, a recommended team. However, as you can see from all of these quotes from our, you know, partners and others that we've worked with in the past, our team brings competence, capacity, diversity, a local presence, and a commitment to excellence that this development requires. We'd love the opportunity to partner with you and work in Emeryville. We're very enthusiastic about this opportunity, and we're here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Anne. Also, an excellent presentation made at the end of a primary presentation. We just had everybody in masterclass from the city staff and two housing developers about how to do a public meeting and present succinctly and adequately what it is they're proposing to bring to our community. So I wanna thank everybody for the amount of professionalism and time that all of you have brought to bringing this forward. Are there any questions for Anne or Related about the specifics of their proposal before I call for comment? Uh, are there any questions for Anne or Related about the specifics of their proposal before I call for comment? You can have discussion and additional questions after the public comment. Okay, seeing none, what I'd like to do is now is the time for public comment. So, now any member of the public who is here who wishes to speak on this item will get three minutes to do so. Please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the zoom bar and raise your hand. Um, and we will call on you in the order that uh, we see you on the screen. If you're joining us by phone and you wish to make a comment, you can still do that. If you go to your phone and press star and then nine, that will raise a little hand on the screen that tells me you wish to speak. Um, when the clerk, uh, when I call on you and the clerk will send you a message over zoom. If you're new to this process, it will ask you to agree to unmute so that you have the ability to speak. Please uh, press that button on your screen, and then um, go ahead and state your name if you'd like, and we will take up to three minutes of comment. So, with that uh, being out there, uh, Madam Clerk, please recognize uh, board member Zoom is the title of the handle. I believe that's uh, Beth Rosales. If you'd please recognize uh, board member Zoom for three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. I'm Beth Rosales, a South Emeryville resident at the Avalon Senior Housing, owned by Ebalzi, whose Board of Directors I serve on. I am also the Vice President of the City's Commission on Aging. But first, before talking about Ebalzi, I'd like to express gratitude to you all, especially then Mayor Scott Donahue and Vice Mayor Alan Medina for shepherding the San Pablo Mid Block Crosswalk Project, which after four years was finally finished last March. Has off to the Public Works Department for a job well done. Now seniors can safely cross San Pablo Avenue without the fear of getting hit by zipping cars. And I also want to thank Councilmember Diane Martinez for dedication and being such a diligent liaison for the Commission of Aging. And lastly, Councilmembers Donahue and Medina, on behalf of all residents of Emeryville, I thank you for your service over the years. So, thank you. But I'm also here tonight to lend support for Ebalzi's proposal. I understand that it's your staff's second choice, but, but I and as well as some other residents of Avalon are here to ask you to reconsider that recommendation. I want to share three points with you. So, having built over twenty-two hundred affordable homes in the East Bay during its almost fifty year history, Ebalzi has developed an approach called Healthy Neighborhood Approach, which goes beyond building low income houses. We stay with the buildings, and we provide services and incorporate the health and improvement of the residents of the buildings as well as the surrounding neighborhoods. And, and for example, is that initiating neighborhood collaborations with local social organizations, churches, small businesses, and professional associations as Ebalzi has in the uh, San Pablo Corridor in Oakland, which is right south of our border. Secondly, Ebalzi is one of the very few nonprofit developers that organizes resident leadership councils in its properties. These resident leadership councils like ours at the Avalon Tenants Advocates promote citizen participation and civic engagements like media advocating for crosswalk for public safety, especially for the area of elderly and disabled. At Avalon, we've built a warm and caring community almost like a family. And lastly, I am very proud that Ebalzi is led by people of color. From our Board of Directors, who are a majority of people of color, to our hundred sixty-six staff, who are eighty-seven percent BIPOC, and tenants who are ninety-four percent people of color. I am proud of Ebalzi's original intent forty-eight years ago to serve the Asian American community, and even prouder as we now serve primarily Black, Latinx, and low income communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comment and coming this evening and for everything you do for the residents at Avalon. The next speaker, Madam Clerk, please to recognize, would be Diane Woods. Good evening, Diane.
Good evening. Um, once again, um, to, to echo Beth, there's something so wonderful about being in this place, even if we're second place, because we are building housing in Emeryville that's going to be available and accessible to individuals who need it. I'm a social worker, and I'm a, my family has lived in Emeryville since nineteen seventy-four. So, I've been around for a little while, and I've seen the city change, and I've seen us make great strides. So, my um, couple of points that I want to make is that buildings are really important, and lovely buildings are incredible. But taking care of the individuals who are in the buildings and supporting them, their economic development, childcare, all of the things that we have, the both groups have put out on the table, that's essential, and Ebalzi is really good at doing that. We know that. And um, one of the things I regret is that we don't have the relationship with you that others have, uh, and will want to have the opportunity to build that. You're going to hear from residents. You're going to hear from other folks. Um, but I think that um, we do a good job of supporting residents as well as building buildings, and that's one of the most important things. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Woods, and thank you for being a long term resident with your family here in Emeryville. Um, next speaker I'd like to recognize, Madam Clerk, would be Godfrey Williams. Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We can, Godfrey. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Thank you, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and um, Board Members and so forth. Yes, um, my name is Godfrey Williams, and I've lived here for two and a half years in um, Ebalzi's um, Avalon on San Pablo, I, San Pablo Corridor. The first thing that struck me about Ebalzi is the varying of background check for applicants. I waited for six months before I could get in. This gives me a clear indication of the quality of those accepted, which makes it a pretty safe community. Again, Ebalzi is really committed to improving and enhancing the quality of life of its residents by allowing and encouraging tenants to form a residence association. Uh, number, uh, is called Avalon Tenants uh, Advocates. I happen to be a member of the steering committee, which acts as a buffer between residents and management to constantly receive, I mean, resolve issues residents may have. Um, residents were very instrumental and supportive of its advocates' proposal to the city of Emeryville in constructing a lighter crosswalk to make it safe for its residents to cross the busy San Pablo Corridor, the shopping center across the street. Ebalzi management morally and financially supports participants and participate in a myriad of social events for its residents. I conclude by recommending Ebalzi for the affordable housing opportunity in Emeryville. Ebalzi can only enhance the image of our beautiful city in Emeryville and work with the city supervisors, administrators when called upon. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Godfrey, for taking the time this evening to come and share that with us. Appreciate that. Um, I'm going to make a last call for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment? Okay, I'd recognize Brian Donahue, please, for three minutes. Good evening.
Yes, we've just heard from three people, residents, uh, that have a material interest in you selecting one of the applicants. Now you're hearing from me, I have no material interest in you selecting any of the applicants. So, I'm just a citizen, a resident. Okay, so, first of all, the, I don't understand why the staff is, is accepting uh, applications from developers who segregate their buildings by income. We heard that, like the other all market rate uh, tower, and then like the portable tower that's nearby. This is, that would be like considered a corridor development, and we know that those are terrible in terms of uh, deliveries, like strife, uh, inequity, and there's a, there's a horrible concept. So, I don't understand why the staff is, and are even entertaining segregated, development segregated by income, and it's, we're supposed to be mixing. So, I wish the staff would stop doing that. Okay, then, but most important, more importantly, and the most important thing to understand here is that none of these proposals come even close to, to, to delivering the park acreage to offset the number of residents that are moving, going to be moving in. Uh, each one of these proposals will bring up, um, depending on if they get as many families as they claim they're going to, but you know, about a thousand new Emeryville residents. So, it's about a thousand, four hundred and fifty units with all these two and three bedroom apartments. So, it's going to be about a thousand. So, uh, the, the, the park expansion is up to ten thousand uh, square feet, we, we were told. But to get to offset a thousand new residents, we'd need a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. They're going to give us ten. We need a hundred and thirty. So, these are all making Emeryville get worse for the existing residents vis a vis park uh, accessibility and, and uh, um, observing our general plan's provisions of three acres of parks per one thousand new residents. So, I don't know, I don't understand why we're entertaining any of these at all. We're getting very close to the sunset of our general plan, and so we really need to start paying much closer attention to getting the parks that we're going to need. We're going to need forty-eight acres of parks by, in ten years, and this is taking us farther backward. So, I don't understand why uh, this is even, can, can, this is, we're even, this is even a go to place, unless we just want to give up on parks. And then if you want to do that, just, you should be transparent about that. The last thing was, I would like the mayor to thank me for being a long term resident of Emeryville. I've lived here for forty-two years. Uh, he thanked another speaker who was speaking on behalf of, of a developer who's lived here for less than I have. Uh, and he did thank that resident for being a long term um, resident. And so, I would like the mayor to thank me now for being a long term resident, forty-two years. I'll accept your thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much for your comment, and Mr. Donahue, thank you so much for being a long term resident of our city. Um, our public meetings would not be anywhere near as interesting or filled with misinformation at times if it wasn't for you. So, we appreciate you so much for being here and keeping us on our toes so that I can do what I'm about to do in a minute, which is correct all of your erroneous statements, as I often have to do. So, with that, is there any other member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, and April, did we receive any comment cards?
Mayor, we did receive one.
Okay, thank you. Can you read that comment, please?
Yes. To the city council, as a resident of Christie Avenue Commons, directly across the street from the proposed development, and a planning commissioner who will be recused from this project's deliberations, I'm writing in support of the resolution designating the EAH team as the first choice developer and the Related proposal as second choice. I believe the EAH proposal is by far the best proposal for the site for the following reasons. It proposes the largest number of units and largest number of affordable units. It has the superior architectural design that works for the site and neighborhood. The design proposes modest eight story masses that do not overwhelm the surrounding community like the two proposals with high rise buildings do. The first choice design has good connections to the public market and to the park and the buildings, and to the park and the buildings are varied, interesting, and well scaled. In short, the developer, EAH, and the architect, David Baker Architects, have demonstrated the soundest approach and a sensitivity to the community that will help to make this new community integrate well with the surroundings. I also support the Related Ebalzi team as a second choice as the scale of their proposal also fits the neighborhood. But I think their design is definitely a step below the EAH team's proposal. It looks corporate and heavy handed and lacks the liveliness of the EAH proposal. Therefore, this team should be rated second and only chosen should the EAH team drop out. I support this resolution with the EAH team as first choice developer and hope that you council members will agree and approve this resolution. Thank you for your time. Rod Henme.
Thank you to Rod Henme for his comment and also for being a resident, like everyone else who's spoken this evening. I appreciate all of you. Um, at this time, is there any last public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to turn to discussion. And members, indulge me for one moment. I would like to just take a moment to uh, thank a couple people in particular and clarify some misinformation that was shared by one of the commenters. I want to thank Chad Smalley and Valerie Bernardo. And I want to thank them for being fantastic employees. I want to thank them for being above and beyond uh, quality servants to the public and our community, and for all the work they do to um, help them fulfill the vision that this city council has had to provide housing justice and housing opportunities for working in low income people in our community. We could not be blessed with better people in that department. Um, contrary to the claim that the staff um, are inappropriately accepting applications from um, developers or applicants that segregate or create the commonly colloquially known corridor types of structures where there is um, a standalone market rate building adjacent to a standalone one hundred percent BMR building, just like to provide for the long term resident in our community who has come to these meetings, where I've spoken on this topic before, but perhaps will land the point tonight. Um, two things that are known. One is that housing finance is not as simple as it should be. It's extremely complicated, and the developers who come with proposals like this that are offering to build affordable housing in our city are actually asked to find somewhere between ten and twenty different types of housing funding and subsidy in order to make these projects even financially feasible. They do, they do the yeoman's work when it comes to that. One of the challenges with, with law housing, low income housing tax credit law is that you can't uh, co-locate certain types of tax credits on the same parcel or sub parcel of land as market rate units. So, that requires that they make a choice. They either have to um, provide the deep subsidies that we want to allow for very low, extremely low, and other working um, family types of income housing um, in our community by seeking those types of credits, which are readily available through HCD and other state programs as well as federal grants. Uh, they have to do that by financing the building completely one way and making those units one hundred percent BMR. Or if they wish to do a mixed income route, they have to um, accept applications from other types of applicants who will subsidize those types of units through other things like vouchers and other types of financial assistance that are not linked to tax credits. Um, the system is got challenges, and it's not a local choice as to what um, the, the law is on that. That is state and federal law, and we are not really at, um, we're not really in a position to change that. And so, they're coming using the system that's provided to them, and I appreciate them for doing that. Second, we put out an RFP, asking the community to maximize the opportunity for housing. Sometimes market rate housing is absolutely necessary to leveraging and bringing in other types of resources that could yield more housing overall. Um, while I understand that the perspective of the speaker is one that we don't need any more market rate housing. We're entering a new uh, Rena cycle, and um, we put out a RFP that called for how would you um, in a very open envelope way, provide for maximum housing opportunity in a community at a time where our housing jobs balances off, and the region is suffering from a housing shortage, as it's been noted by Rena, not by the city of Emeryville, um, and by HCD. And so, that application process is open, and as was seen, we had six applicants. We didn't feel that the financing structures proposed um, by several of those applicants were either um, the most feasible or um, provable and deliverable, and rather than go down a path that would delay us for several years and perhaps not yield the housing we need, um, the staff, I think very appropriately, narrowed this down to two excellent proposals that we've just heard about and heard some very passionate um, and, and good feedback on from the presenters and the public. Uh, so, these, these are our key things. The other thing about not delivering on park acreage and um, bringing families, the family friendly guidelines exist. We have um, over a hundred three bedroom units proposed in the first proposal, and we have over ninety in the second with several four bedroom units. You can't find that in almost any affordable housing proposal across the Bay Area. And that's due to how we've developed our design guidelines and our development code related to affordable housing. So, we actually have very excellent applications here to choose from. They are, are family oriented, and to the point about parks, yes, I think every person here on the city council agrees that we wish to expand parks and find opportunities to do that, but not at the cost of housing, because people don't need to sleep in a park. They need to sleep with a roof over their head. So, I'll get my preliminary comments there out of the way, and I would love to open it up now to other members. Thank you so much for indulging my preliminary remarks. Who would like to go next? And I didn't mean to like drop the mic, so who would like to go next? I'm going to call on one of you. It's going to be Diane. Yep.
Sure. Um, I, these are two really outstanding proposals. They're actually very similar. I think both of these developers really understood the assignment and um, understood what we were asking for. I think that's why. Um, they look similar. I think that they have um, similar talents in being able to put together uh, development and architectural teams that maximize this particular space. Um, so, this is a really difficult decision. I um, personally, I am leaning towards the staff recommendation. Um, for the numbers that, the items that the staff highlighted, uh, for me, the ones that resonate are the total amount of units and um, that lower funding gap per unit. Um, however, you know, I, I want to acknowledge that these are both outstanding proposals. Um, in, and we know these developers. We know the impact that they've had in our East Bay communities, um, and they And they, they will, they do and continue to do outstanding work. So you know, I honestly, I'd be happy with either of them, but the needle just tips very slightly for me towards E A H. And I just want to put in there that there was, there are two periods of time for me. The time before I ever played pickleball and now when I have played pickleball. So I would, if either, whoever we go with, if they decide that park amenity needs to be pickleball instead of basketball or whatever, that would be fine with me. I'll be a resident at that time, so no longer on the council, but I just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Martinez. Who would like to go next? Member Welch?
I just want to second Member Martinez's comments. This is, it's like such a very tough decision because they are both amazing proposals. And this is the type of thing that you wish for, to have like two really great options to choose from and the opportunity to bring more affordable housing for our low income families and our vulnerable populations in the city. So I feel like even though this is such a tough decision, it really feels like such a great opportunity to have to decide on two great proposals. So, but to that extent, I am leaning as well towards staff recommendation just for the amount of units as we're looking into our arena cycle and what our numbers could look like after development. Having opportunities to have those more units and chip away more at our arena numbers is a big deal for me. Also the funding gap as well, but it's, it's, it wasn't easy. And I just want to thank both organizations for really, you know, hearing what we were looking for and, and really, you know, giving it their all with these proposals. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Welch. I'm going to call on Member Donahue.
Yes, of course, I love this too because we get more long term residents for our city that are likely to really be here. And the enlargement of this, our community for long term residents just is always a good thing. I appreciate also that they are both willing to talk about the intersection with the park and that their design work is not done, that this is the beginning. And I will be supporting the staff recommendation of E A H is number one. But I also recognize that E Balzey is really good. And if we have any troubles, we just are so blessed to be able to have them on board.
Thank you so much, Member Donahue. Vice Mayor Medina?
You know, I don't think I can add too much. The staff report was really fantastic. We got two good proposals. We've worked, both of these developers already have a presence in Emeryville, so they're somewhat known quantities to us. Our goal here is very much hit those seven metrics that were stated. And this proposal slightly edged out the other one. I think it's fantastic. I'm excited to support it. I think that making this big of a dent in our arena needs for low income affordable housing is the absolute best way we could be starting off the cycle and I'm really excited to support this proposal.
Thank you. So I just, I'll just make a couple of final points, which is I agree with everything that my colleagues said. I don't wish to repeat everything, just to extend my deepest appreciation to both of these applicants and their teams. We're in a very envious position, having the blessing of having both of you had applied. Really, the voters in Emeryville in adopting and passing Measure C in two thousand and eighteen and providing us with the resources necessary to help bring projects like this off the ground and bring deep and meaningful affordable housing opportunities to families in our community who otherwise would not have those opportunities is really a testament to the type of city that we live in and the type of people who live here and our desire to be a more inclusive and welcoming place for everybody. And so I'm extremely excited to move forward with closing out an old redevelopment agency asset that's been sitting vacant in the heart of a really awesome neighborhood that has the opportunity to be transformative for the lives of many people. And we couldn't go wrong between choosing either of these applicants. And I feel like a little torn that it's, it's not both, right? It's, it's either. So I feel a little torn about that. But I also know that with, with that, there are going to be other opportunities here in the city to do these types of projects. We have ambitions beyond the Christie sites alone. And so I look forward to working with both of these partners in the future. You've both brought extremely meaningful and wonderful opportunities for housing to our community. You're both really doing the work that we, we need done, not just here in Emeryville, but across the region to create a more just and equitable space for everyone. And so my vote today is to approve both, right? Is a first and second choice because I know that we can't go wrong. And so I will also support the staff recommendation. And that's in no, with no slight to E Balzey and Related for their proposal. I really feel that some of the details are just really close. But in the end, I'm going to go with more three bedroom units, just more larger family sized units in an area that's over, overpopulated with one bedrooms and studios and the opportunity to just maximize that housing envelope with the units that have been proposed. So with that, I have no further comments. Are there additional comments from members? If not, members, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'm with the resolution.
I will second.
I recognize a member first, the motion was made by Member Martinez and it was first seconded by Member Welch and thirded by Member Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Councilmember Welch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Hi.
And Mayor Bauders.
Hi, thank you to everybody. And once again, thank you so much to our city staff who put this process together, really diligently worked through the process and to the applicants for being responsive to the staff's questions and getting us to a place where we're all really excited about what we have going forward. So we look forward to working with E A H and we also look forward to working with E Balzey. And we're grateful for the members of the community who came out this evening. All right, that closes item eleven point one. Eleven point two is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services contract in the amount of two point one million dollars with Diablo Engineering Group for professional design consult services for the Fortieth Street Transit Only Lanes and the Multimodal Enhancements Project, which is C I P project number T thirteen. And I would like to welcome Mohammed Alawi from our Public Works Department. And I see Ryan O'Connell is here. Is there anyone else joining you from Public Works?
Just the two of us and I'll be handling, handing it over to Ryan.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, City Council and kudos to our outgoing members. It's been wonderful working with you in all these years. So we have a project here for, you know, incoming council members and for the public. I'm going to go over a quick scope of work of what this project is. Next slide. So this project is a redesign of Fortieth Street and parts of San Pablo Avenue and Shellmount Street. The project started out as a beautification of a bus hub at Fortieth Street and San Pablo. And as we got into the community outreach efforts of the project and we saw the needs of the community, it quickly grew to be a much larger project that turned into a multimodal project. And what it hits on is mostly transit. It reduces travel times for buses by striping bus only lanes in each direction along Fortieth Street. It hits on bike safety by putting in a two way cycle track on the north side of Fortieth Street from Adeline Street at the east edge of our city limits, all the way to the Bay Bridge Trail just south of IKEA. And then also it hits on head safety. There's going to be improvements at eleven intersections throughout the corridor and added bus boarding islands and shelters. Next slide. So as you can see at the westerly end of the project, this is the Bay Bridge Trail, Trailhead just south of IKEA, there's a beautification of the plaza entrance here, a cycle track on the north side of the street as it transitions over across the bridge onto Fortieth Street. Next slide. And as you can see here, as it lands at Horton Street part, or Horton Street intersection, there is protected corners at that intersection. It connects to other bike facilities along Horton Street. And there is also going to be an exploration of a class one path that connects Hubbard to Hallet Street to make an extra connection throughout the community, which will eventually connect up to a new park over on Sherwin Avenue. Looking at the intersections here on, on this screen right now, you can see that Horton Street and Hollis Street are signalized. The other intersections, Haven Street, Holden Street, Hubbard Street, we're going to be looking at this in depth to see if it's worth closing these streets to improve the safety of the corridor where there's some free rights that go over these crosswalk areas. So that's going to be one of our first tasks of this project as we get into it. Next slide. And as you can see, the improvements continue through the corridor with an eastbound and westbound transit only lane. It goes all the way to the easterly city limits of Adeline Street where we have a large beautification effort at the intersections or at the, the section of Fortieth Street between Adeline and San Pablo Avenue, where we will be widening sidewalks, putting in new tree plantings and beautifying the whole area and making it a comfortable transfer spot for all of the A C transit and immigrant around transfers that occur at this location. Next slide. Just some graphics that show the design concepts kind of in three D. So a cycle track on the left side and then on the east, the, the right side, a graphic of what a protected corner can look like at the intersection of Fortieth Street and San Pablo Avenue. Next slide. So right now, our project status, back in two thousand and twenty, city council approved a conceptual design and a final planning report that was carried out by our planning department. It was a great effort, a lot of community outreach and events that took us to this final concept design. With that, with those designs, we were able to go for grants in two thousand and twenty one and we were very successful in our grant applications that year. We got two million dollars from A C T C for the design phase. And then additionally, we got from the state program, the S B one A T P program, one point three seven million dollars also for the design phase. So with those funds secured, we have issued an R F P in August of this year for a consultant firm to come in and complete the design phase of this project. We anticipate in December of, you know, in a, in a few weeks really, to get this contract approved and issue an N T P right away and get this thing started. So next slide. So we received two proposals, both great teams, great local teams as well, putting together strong teams with good example projects of what they've done in the past. After reviewing the proposals, we decided to recommend Diablo Engineering Group to carry forward with a contract with them. One of their large projects that you may have written on before is a cycle track at Lake Merritt. So great designs that we saw in this example and from their team, a lot of similar elements of what we'll see at kind of like where the Bay Trail Trailhead is and how it transitions over the bridge. So a lot of similar intersections and stormwater plantings that we want to put in as well. So a strong team that was able to put together that project in a, in a very timely fashion. It was a strong weighting of the scoring for them. Next slide. And so just an upcoming schedule, what we're looking at for this project is to issue a notice of proceed in December and start right away. One of the strongest elements of the Diablo Engineering Group team was that they could move quick on this project. We, we want to, by spring two thousand and twenty three, get into the preliminary design. We'll be doing a feasibility and traffic study immediately, looking at the closures of some of these minor streets that are on signalized along the corridor. The team, some of the subs underneath Diablo include Fair and Peers and C D and A, which also worked on this project in the planning phase. So that really helps with some of the earlier community outreach efforts that we did early on and some great graphics that came out of that effort. We can revamp them and get them closer to this final design as we go to city committee reviews and community outreach events that will, will take place in spring of this upcoming year. And summer two thousand and twenty three, we hope to bring to council the thirty five percent design plans for some feedback, but also to get some approval to go for some grant applications for the two thousand and twenty three cycle of grants that will be out there throughout the state and in our region. And like I said, we're going to be trying to move fast on this project. And December two thousand and twenty three, we hope to have a hundred percent plans complete and have this thing shovel ready, ready to get some construction funding and get this thing going. Next slide. So the recommendation for action item eleven point two is we recommend executing a professional service contract with Diablo Engineering Group in the amount of two point one million dollars with an expiration of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. That will ensure that the consultant provides us full support during the design and bidding phases of this project to help us deliver this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there clarifying questions for Ryan? I just have one question, Ryan. The contract covers the full design of Fortieth Street or only the portion that we have, we have in the presentation today?
The full section of Fortieth Street, all the way to the city limits. We'll, we'll also be looking at how to get that transition at our city limits with City Oakland. So there would be some stakeholder meetings with them on that end.
Okay, great. And I'll just note also for, since we just had an affordable housing item, that a lot of the funding that was made available to put us in a position to do this is because we have ambitious affordable housing goals and our support for resources for community development, housing, R C D at thirty six hundred San Pablo positioned that project, which includes permanent supportive housing for the homeless, in a place to get money for a strategic growth council grant, which included funding of about almost five, five point million something to do this project as part of the transit nexus to it. So that's why we do the affordable housing that we do. We can get everything done. So any other questions? All right, now is the time for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment on item eleven point two will get three minutes to do so. I'd like to first recognize Board Member Zoom, I believe is Ms. Rosales. Welcome back. Oh, hand is down.
No, thank you. I'm sorry. My hand is lowered.
That's okay. All right, so let's lower the hand on that and we will, next to recognize John, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bauders. I wanted to just express that it was very difficult slash impossible for me to recognize the improved pedestrian pathway past IKEA over the tracks over to, let's say to Target. And currently, there's only a walkway on the north side, which is now being, seems like encroached by a two way bike path, which I understand because you've taken away the bike path that was on the south side and made it a bus line. So I would just like to make sure that the plans that are finalized accommodate a two way walking path on the north side as well. Or either side, but either way, I'd like to have a two way bike path, excuse me, walking path for pedestrians both ways. I walk that way, believe it or not, frequently and I'm a senior. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The next speaker I'd like to recognize, Madam Clerk, is Brian Donahue. Welcome back, long term resident of Emeryville.
Yes, long term residents should always be thanked. So I wanted to say that we got a really quotable quote here tonight. I've been searching for one and we got a really quotable quote. As a matter of fact, it represents what I'm going to characterize as a turning point for Emeryville. That is, the mayor just said, "We need parks, but not at the cost of housing." That's the direct quote. That's super quotable. I, I thank Mr. Bauders for, you know, the candor in telling us that. Although that's a major change of direction, you should probably go to the community about that. I mean, you don't have to legally, of course. I just recommend you go to the community and, and like find out if that what the community wants. It's clear that you do want, that you want that, but that you might not, the community might not want that. And you can go to get an idea that the community might not want that. Just look at the general plan. That's what the community likes. So the park acreage that I, they talked about, it were one thousand three hundred percent too little how it parking for these, these Christie projects that we just talked about. One thousand three hundred percent too little. You know, anger at me for mentioning this is the wrong response to residents coming and talking to the council and asking that their general plan be followed. and talking to the council and asking that their general plan be followed. You know, anger is the wrong response from the, from the government officials, you know, from on high down to the residents who are, are asking that the general plan be followed. I just think it's inappropriate emotion. You should not be getting angry at us for that. And then on, I agree with the other speaker, it's the, 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 the bridge, the Fortieth Street Bridge is being changed to make it less friendly for bicycling and for pedestrians because the buses will be passing, for bikes, buses will be passing right by them, very close, very close proximity to the bicyclists. Whereas right now, the, the buses and cars are a long ways away. They're about, you know, 12 feet away and they'll be right next to the bicyclist. And so I agree with the speaker that it's not an improvement for bicycling and pedestrian activities. It's better for mass transit, true, but not for bicycling and pedestrian activity. So anger is the wrong response for us asking to have the general plan be followed. And, and I thank the mayor for that quote, although I do think you should go to the community, community about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other people who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll just, I'll just kick us off because you know, I'm, I'm borrowing time right now with my lack of sleep. So let me just note for the record that we do talk to the public quite a bit. In fact, in the last number of years, we've done polling on a number of items in order to put together ballot measures to fund the things that the public overwhelmingly approves. And the number one thing that's been on everyone's minds each time is housing. So we do talk to the community regularly. In fact, you can go and review any of those prior council meetings and all of the polling data. It will show time and time again that the number one thing on the minds of Emeryville voters is that they would like us to put more housing in place. So thank you for reminding me of the importance of listening to the community as someone who does it all the time. I really appreciate it. I even appreciate your dissenting and minority view on the issue and I hope that you will write about it and let everybody know because that's the way the public discourse goes. So with that, let's move to the discussion and member Medina, Vice Mayor.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Awesome.
Wait, wait, I want to say something.
Go ahead, Member Donahue.
You can add, I just beat you to the motion.
Well, I just want.
Still talk, we haven't taken a move.
I, I just want to thank those that have been coming up with this plan since I haven't served on the Bike Ped Committee for eight years, that I look at this plan as really being good for my life going forward, even if I slow down, get so slow that protected bike lane with the forces of gravity, driving cars will be smashing opposite to where the bikes and peds will be. They'll be smashing on the south side of the bridge. And so this basic design where we've actually had cyclists injured by cars going out of control, going too fast around the corner on the bridge, this, this will fix that and this will make for a pleasant cross-town route for me as a cyclist in my aging years and it's a pleasure to have this be, you know, coming up on my last voting session as a council member. So I really like this plan.
Would you like to second the Vice Mayor's motion?
Uh, yes, as I would.
And I would just, I hate to break it to you and Member Martinez, but you will have voting items on December 6th, so just stay tuned.
Uh-oh.
You have another, you have another meeting to vote at. But with that, is there any further discussion on this? Just want to give a shout out to Ryan and all the council members for moving this project forward. Excited to get the design underway. Hope that we will get a chance to meet with the consultant and provide some input at the Transportation Committee because I know we have some ideas and I heard from our pedestrian advocate here at the Commission on Aging and from Abco, Mr. Sutter, Suter, about his interest in discussing it. I think we all have some great pedestrian enhancements to share at that time at those committees. So with that, Madam Clerk, there's a motion by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Member Donahue to approve this item. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Thank you. That item is approved. Members, we're going to do 11.3 and then before we go to 12, I need to revisit one item briefly. So on 11.3, it's a resolution of the city council, the city of Emeryville, making required findings for the remotely held meetings pursuant to AB 361. Wave presentation on this item is their public comment on the AB 361 resolution. Seeing none, public comment is closed. And, okay, Mr. Donahue, we'll recognize you for one minute. Your hand is a little slow tonight for somebody who's on top of the game, but recognize public comment on this item for one minute, please.
Okay, so Emeryville, we learned here tonight that Emeryville residents are very odd because unlike other people in America, we don't like parks, as it turns out. Now, the ADA says that we should get, that American cities should have three acres of park per thousand residents, except in Emeryville, where we don't like parks, we recently found out. So let's change the general plan to reflect what the people actually want, which is not parks. And so why have three acres of parks per thousand residents in the plan? Just vexing us and, you know, it, it just makes us feel bad. Let's get, let's change the plan to reflect our park, there are disinterest in parks and let's get rid of parks in the plan. Let's do it that way, Mr. Bouters, so it can at least be on the up and up. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to comment on this? Seeing none, it's AB 361 resolution is their discussion. Seeing none is their motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by Member Welch to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Thank you. That resolution is approved. Members, we're at item 12, which is Department Head Reports. Mr. Pulsar, is there a Department Head Report of any kind tonight?
No, there is not. Thank you.
Okay, members, I would like to, I was erroneous in something I had intended to do earlier. We had public comment for items not on the agenda earlier this evening. We had a couple of public speakers who made an inquiry about cyclist video recording. They, there was an agenda item at a prior meeting that was on the consent calendar. At the time, advocates who had presented at the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee just were not familiar with the city's public comment process, so they missed the time for a comment on the consent calendar and raised their hand a couple of times to speak on other items and then lowered them when they realized that that wasn't the appropriate item, which I appreciate. They came back this evening to speak and in trying to move this forward with the housing item, I failed in my, my leadership this evening to offer and request that the city attorney maybe provide a response. I wanted to come to Department Head Reports and ask if the city attorney's office, would please indulge us and just provide a response for the public's benefit as to the issues that were raised by public commentators on this, on this item, if you would, Mr. Kennedy.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Somewhat of a complicated area, but I'll try to make it as simple to understand as possible. So under criminal law, certainly with respect to any assault, which is where potentially somebody who's driving a vehicle may drive in such a manner that puts a pedestrian or bicyclist in fear of being hit or in instances where there's an actual battery and that is where, for example, a motorist may actually hit a bicyclist or a pedestrian. Video evidence can be used and submitted to the police department as part of their investigation to determine whether or not a crime has been committed. And that video evidence could be admissible in court as part of the prosecution of those types of instances. However, under current law, with respect to moving violations, such as driving a vehicle in a bike lane or speeding on the street, or a parking violation, such as parking a vehicle in a bike lane or parking a vehicle in a red zone, video evidence is not admissible in court to prove the actual violation. The violation needs to be witnessed by a police officer or other person who's been authorized to enforce such violations. And my understanding is that that is what the Cycle Video Evidence Group is attempting to do, to use videotape evidence for purposes of enforcing moving violations or parking violations, which is not currently authorized under state law. I'm only aware of two situations in which video evidence can be used and those include the red light camera program. You may know cameras at intersections that videotape moving violations, illegal turns. Those types of recording evidence can be used for purposes of proving a moving violation and for forward-facing cameras on transit vehicles where a recording can be used of a parking violation and that recording can be based, can be used as a basis for issuing a parking violation. So as our report previously indicated, we are recommending that any proposed use of such video recordings for purposes of moving violations or parking violations, that state law first be changed to authorize the use of such video recordings for purposes of proving a violation.
Thank you. I, I noticed that Chief Jennings briefly raised his hand. Can we just afford him the opportunity to speak in case he wished to add anything as a Department Head here under reports? Evening, Chief Jennings. Just wanted to, I saw your hand go up briefly. Did you wish to add anything? If not, it's okay.
Yes, I did. I just wanted to affirm that City Attorney Kennedy and I did speak on this subject a couple of times and with my staff and he is absolutely correct in his assessment of the law that, and we just wanted to make sure there was no confusion for the, for the council that exactly what he said is, is, is the law.
Okay, so that's, that's fine. Anything else you wish to add?
No, sir.
Okay, and so I see other hands. This isn't Department Head Report, it's not a debate, it's not a discussion item, so we won't be taking other comments this evening. This was an opportunity for you to provide comment earlier in the evening. And as I mentioned, I apologize that I waited until after the agenda items to ask the city attorney to respond, but under Department Head Reports, he's a Department Head and I can ask him to respond to a comment in the course of the, discuss in the course of the evening, but we cannot have a discourse about it because it is not an agenda item. So that is, Mr. Kennedy, is that the conclusion of your report?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And are there any clarifying questions on the Department Head Reports? Okay, seeing none, that moves us to future agenda item requests from council members. Are there any members who have items? No.
I thought we could add a casino to town. No, I'm kidding. Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to remind council that we had an item that I had brought forward and I think it was going to come back. And as we've got some turnover that's happening with council and with staff as well, I just want to remind folks that we should address the committee, council, committee liaisons. Just as, I, I know we've got two parents possibly joining council and just want to be mindful of the amount of hours that we do spend as council members and, and involve people in the conversation about whether it is currently feasible for people to spend time as, on advisory committee as liaisons. So I hope that'll come back as a future agenda item for the new composition of the board to consider.
Thank you. City Clerk Richardson, just clarification on that point. Did we take act, do you know if, I mean, I know you probably came after this discussion, but do you know if we took action to end those at the end of the year by amending any relevant city council rules or code or do we need to do that formally?
Mayor, I don't, no, there was no action on that item and I will have to look up and find out exactly what happened. It was, sorry, it was right after I started, but I do remember the item and I know what Councilmember Martinez is talking about.
Okay, so I would like to just give, oh, go ahead.
I believe we intended to bring it back for a more robust discussion that maybe included possibilities of quarterly attendance or on-call attendance, but there, there just we needed time for more discussion and possibly for staff to investigate what the different possibilities might be.
Okay, will council be amenable to me working with the city attorney, the city clerk and the city manager to try to bring something forward to a, if, if, I don't even know if it requires a legal, you know, rule, but like to bring the item forward in the near future so that we can just have the discussion about what we want to do. I see Scott says yes, Diane was a yes. Okay, there's a majority support to do that, so we'll, we'll work on that and I'll make sure we get it on an agenda with staff. Other future agenda item requests? Okay, well, thank you so much. We're at the end of our meeting. The time is 9:18 PM on the Pacific Coast. I wish all of you a lovely Tuesday evening. Bye.